Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hallie.
Yes.
Speak up, Joy.
Thought I'd throw you out.
Deep on angry birds.
That's your Kaylin?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Here.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Any additions or changes to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the April 28th council meeting. We have both your February and March finance reports. We have a resolution for employment at Park and Rec, I'm sorry, Public Works Department, approval of a liquor license for Hy-Vee, and approval of claims in the amount of $225,027.43. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Florinoy?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaylin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, then we'll move to our action items. First is we will be adjouring this evening to May 27th, which is Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, for our next meeting. And we'd like to set a public hearing for our 1314 budget amendment. So entertain a motion to set that date for our budget hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving street construction tree replacement policy. Michael, I know you've been working on this. Is there anything you wanted to point out in the resolution?
I'll just read the basic points. This is something that Administrator Clausen had unofficially put in place that we just wanted to formalize. It's part of the new urban tree plan. It just basically says that in the instance of a street reconstruction project, that's where the street is completely torn out and put in, a lot of times the street trees are removed because they're too close to the street. The machine that lays the new concrete can't get in there. So the policy is the city will provide one replacement tree for every tree removed during a street reconstruction project at no cost to property owners. The trees will be planted by a local nursery. Come from the, and the trees will be chosen from the list of recommended trees. That's the newly updated list of appropriate species for street trees. And the cost for replacement will be included in the project, their street reconstruction project budget. And the project will not be deemed complete until the trees are planted.
Okay. Thank you. And I know this really has been our policy. We did have some street construction, you know, on D Street recently where there were trees removed and we had some new planting. So good for us to formalize it at this point in time. So entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie, second by Florinoy. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our resolution approving a healthy vending policy. And again, this is on the path towards our Blue Zone certification, something that we had discussed at our January work session meeting. And Michael, again, I know you've taken the leadership in this. If you can-
Sure.
-give us some background on that.
Yeah, this is another city policy to get us our Blue Zone designation. We're almost there, actually. The updated bike and pedestrian plan is the last thing that brings the council, hopefully, at our next meeting. This is healthy vending standards. Actually, the park and rec vending machine already meets NEM standards, Nutrition, Environment, Measure Survey. So we're gonna make sure that all the vending machines, half the options in our vending machines meet NEMs and Blue Zone guidelines for healthy food and beverages. Really aren't that many vending machines on city property. I can't think of anything besides the one there by the indoor pool. So it's pretty easy to meet that since-
There aren't any hiding anywhere else? Anybody got any in the departments that we're unaware of?
I don't think they use vending machines. Well, they're not necessarily open to the public, you know, they might be-
But is that an issue?
We'll look into it, but, you know, it wasn't too hard, I don't think. All right, there you go. So-
Well, or it can become 50% healthier choices-
Yeah.
-if that's possible. And that's, that's really what this is about, trying to change the culture in places where we work. And it does go a long way, just to give people healthy option. I mean, you know, that nice ripe apple might not be the thing you would reach for if there were some peanut M&amp;M's right there, but you may if the peanut M&amp;M's are not, so.
There you go. So I'll motion, I'll move to approve.
Okay, move to approve the resolution approving healthy vending standards, second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we have approval of the engineering agreement for Libertyville Road Sewer Project. And Melanie, can you give us some background on the status of that project at this point in time and what services are going to be provided at this time?
And this came from committee. I didn't know if Darren wanted to cover it.
No.
Okay.
You've got it in your hand, I don't.
Yeah. And, and then I assume that you guys don't have a copy of it?
No, there wasn't a link provided, so.
How could I give my highlight video to you?
Nah.
Okay. So this is an engineering services agreement for the sewer to serve the homes around Libertyville Road. Our initial public meetings with the, with the residents has gone well. They seem receptive to the point that at least to start preliminary design to see how it will lay out and go through the properties. There are essentially four parts to the agreement. Parts A and B, we have preliminary services and design services. Those are, I'll say, our standard services as far as doing survey work, getting the other utilities located, designing the alignments and the grade. One thing with these homes being not served by a public sewer, we would get into the basements of the homes to make sure that the lowest existing fixture could be served by gravity with the proposed line. Section C is easement acquisition. With this contract, we're proposing doing this at an hourly rate with a budget of $31,000. As we've started to find with the conveyance project is the property owners that we think are going to be easy are hard, and the ones that we thought were going to be hard go through pretty easy. So it's very hard to determine the time that we spend on easements. So for your best interest, we have that at an hourly rate. And then Part D is the engineering during construction. It's also an hourly rate. I'll say pretty much our standard services as far as watching, observing the contractor, not directing their operations, preparing reports during construction. Parts A and B, on page four, Parts A and B have a lump sum of $56,000. Part C, a budget of $31,000, and Part D, a budget of $59,000. And I forgot to add that up, but I believe it comes, oh, there it is, one comes to $146,000.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Any questions on the scope of the services agreement or amount?
I have a question. This agreement looks fine. So I don't really have a question about the agreement itself, but I have a more question about the project itself. You know, I've heard from people in the community feeling that we're being foolish to spend all this money on the sewer that only a few people are going to use, that many people are not interested in annexing into the city down there, and that this is, you know, it's going to take a long time to recoup this investment that we make. And I was just wondering if we have any big picture that kind of eased my mind or the other community members who feel that way, to know, you know, who do we already have? Maybe we don't already have anybody until this work is done, until they actually have an idea how much it is, but we must have some ballpark. Do we have any idea of who, you know, who's off, off the, you know, off the bat, ready to go, you know, versus who's not? Because if we're only doing this for property owners or something, you know, if, if this is going to be a big use of our, of our resources, maybe, maybe it'd be better to wait some time for this. And so can anybody speak to that?
Yeah, Sean, could you address that, please?
At this time, with the preliminary meetings we've had, we've talked to a lot of the owners individually also. We have approximately 12 down through that stretch right now with a new house that's also being built here in the very near future, and definitely once on. There's, I think, also with that 12, there's approximately 16, if I remember right, right offhand, that actually has consent orders from the DNR, that they have to do something in the next 18 months. So that's also a motivational factor for them also to be able to come into, onto a city sewer instead of going through a septic tank system again. With us starting this, even though the project might not be completely finished by their time, their 18 months is up, because they're almost eight months into it now, this will give them an extension also through the DNR, because we've made headway to go forward with this. But so far at the meetings, we've had a lot of, a lot of really good motivation to go this way, and a lot of happy people that we're looking at doing it. This all started almost a year ago when we went to a public meeting with Russ, who was wanting to take over that area. And we were just looking at options at that point. But so far, it's, I've seen when we had probably 25 people here the night we had our public meeting, and it was, went really well, and there's a lot of interest in it.
What's the total number of property owners in that corridor that we'd be servicing there? Do you have any idea?
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-two. So 12 of them have, have agreed, show up hands, or?
Basically, yes. We haven't done any actual, like, contract or anything like that, but yeah, they-
To show a necks into the city to get this service?
Correct. Along with this new house that's being built also. It also helps us hook on to some of the new hospitals property, the properties that they bought out, the two houses right up next to the church. That helps us bring that to, so if they decide to expand out into their properties, that we'll be able to service them through the city also, which right now, we can't do that. So that's kind of a bonus for us, too, in that area, is be able to service that, because that is a very developable property through there. And it'd be nice to be able to, to be able to service them right off the bat also.
Okay, that makes you feel better. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Okay, so entertain a motion then to approve the engineering services agreement for the Libertyville Road Sewer Project.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaylin. All those, actually, let's take, call the roll on that, please.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaylin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have two items for our airport, and one is a contract extension for Fairfield Flying Service, and the other would be the lease for the fixed base operator agreement. And Robert, if you could come up, and I understand this is going to be a longer contract term and extension-
Yes.
-and obviously one that's justified because of the work that's going to be going on with the development of the new terminal, and certainly kind of rewarding you for the good service that you've provided our city for many, many years.
I appreciate it. It's been a good, almost 19 years, and I felt that Roger and I talked a lot, that it was necessary to go forward with, going ahead and getting extension, just so we, as in my email, that I emailed everyone. And we do have some good projects coming up. The terminal, the big one, then I have the fuel farm project, which is about three or four years down the road. It's very important that we get that done. I felt that I'd need, I need to be there another 10 years to get that all accomplished. And a couple other things on that's happening also.
Okay, and this-
Are there any questions?
Yeah. And there are, this also was reviewed by Airport Committee?
Yeah, it's been reviewed and approved by the Airport Committee. And there's actually the two contracts, the fixed base operator lease and the airport manager's contract.
Correct.
Those are the two.
Okay. So the first one, then, would be the airport management contract. Any questions for, for Robert?
The increase for, was there an increase for price for the service annually? It's the same?
It's the same. I've always got a cost of living, and I did get a raise a year ago, but I'm, it's, it doesn't have that in here, no. It's just based on the contracts that December 1st, we can, the airport board, we can talk about an increase. But I've always been very fortunate to get a cost of living raise over the years, except maybe one or two years.
Okay.
Robert, you just alluded to some long-term contracts, long-term projects in the, in the airport that make you feel that it justifies the length of this contract. Could you just present us with a little vision, just for a couple minutes, just go over some of the main points of what your, what these projects are?
Well, the, the big one right now is a terminal building project.
Right.
And that's, that's going to carry us into the future. It's kind of like the icing on the cake, what we've done out there at the airport. We've done very, very many projects, been very fortunate for the City Council to support there, or to do the, the many, many projects that we've got through the FAA and the state. In about four years, we get, we get $150,000 a year from FAA to do certain projects, and we can bank that up to three years. And then we can actually go into the fourth year on a, on a major project. But the next one down the road is going to be the fuel farm. It dates the fuel farm.
Fuel farm.
Yeah, it needs updated. Our two tanks right now are $10,000 each for our jet and 100 low lead. And the FAA will fund that at 90%. That's about four years down the road. We can bank our AIP money, which is Airport Improvement Program money. We'll bank that and use it for that project if the city sees fit, which we do need it. In 1990 is when we put our tanks in. Their useful life is coming up very soon. So that's the next major project that we're going to do. We also have, we would, in the future, if we do get more jets based on the field, there is, the FAA will fund new hangars also. That, that is in the proposal, in the long-term forecast, five to 10 years down the road. Right now, it's been good. The last year, we've seen a, a good increase in jet traffic coming in. We have two base jets now, and we've had up to four over the years. And right now, we have two. We also have a gentleman in town that has a timeshare program, and that, that's a jet that comes in from the outside, that comes in to pick him up. So right now, we are full on capacity on, we have no room for any more jets on the field. So hopefully, down the road, that, that somebody will come in and entertain them with a new hanger that can be built through FAA funds.
Good, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Robert. Good, then. I would entertain a motion to approve the airport management contract.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaylin.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Ledger Kaylin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next action would be to approve the fixed-based operator lease.
So moved.
Moved by Rasmussen to approve.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaylin. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaylin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Robert. Really appreciate it and look forward to, to all the development this year in particular. We're hoping, potentially by the end of the year, having something open, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, counsel, next, we have third and final reading of our ordinance 1119, which is a water rate increase. This is a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any public comment. We'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion to move from the second to the, for the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton. That's just a water rating increase. Second by Hallie. Any discussion? Not, please?
I did have one person call me and, and ask me about this. When these rates were proposed to be increased from the McClure study, it was set at 10% for the first year, but since we had waited almost a year from that time, it had caused us to have to increase this by 12% on the water usage side only. And the total amount that should be reflected on your bill should be in the 4% range over what you're currently paying. So it was unfortunate that we had to wait the time that we did. We felt that it was more prudent to move forward with the sewer increases than trying to do both water and sewer at the same time. So we have them now on offset schedules for our step programs. You'll see a sewer increase coming in December, but we'll have to look at what our numbers have been to see if we are still on track for the increase that was in the McClure study. But it would be a year from now when we would look at another water rate increase for Step Two of the water side improvements.
Okay. Thanks, Darren. And I know at our last meeting, our water superintendent, Carl Chandler, did give us some of the projects that this increase is going to be funding. So we, we've got a well-justified increase here to keep up with our infrastructure and plant maintenance needs. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaylin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, counsel, we have third and final reading of a rezoning request from B1 to R3 multifamily, and that's for 200 East Briggs Avenue. We'll now open the public hearing, ask if there's anyone who'd like to comment on the rezoning request. Seeing no comment, we'll close the public hearing. Any feedback on this zoning change? This comes to us recommended from planning and zoning. Entertain a motion to pass from the third final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Since I wanted to, in my report, mention that this is Police Memorial Week. This is the time when we observe the contributions of those fallen officers who've died in the line of duty, and we, February does have some history in that regard. And we'd like to take this time to appreciate the role that police officers play in our community, and that they can also give the ultimate sacrifice with their life. So we recognize this Police Memorial Week. Next, I want to give you an update on the Logan apartment sale. We did get a booklet completed, which describes the property, the bid documents that someone would need to place a bid, the appraisal that we received on the project that was distributed to all the people who had shown both local interest and also a couple of people that we had been speaking with. We've placed one ad in the state newspaper. We have one other that's going to go in this week. We have, John, I believe our documents say that bids would be required by the end of the month, so the 30th, Friday, the 30th. So hopefully, we'll be getting some returns on that. We'll keep you posted. But we have some things out there at this time. We did receive, I don't, can't remember whether that's in the, within the last two weeks since the last meeting, but we did receive word that we received the CDPG Downtown facade grant. Met with Area 15 this afternoon, who really submitted the grant for us and likely going to be a grant administrator for us moving forward. It's, it's as if the process kind of begins again, because we really have to go, go back through a design process with a lot of approval levels. The grant was for $500,000. We've designed the project to be a total of 1.1 million, with 100,000 contribution from the city, 500,000 in participation from the property owners. This is going to be spread out over 15 different properties. There were 17 in our application, so part of the process will be go, to go back to those property owners to do final designs. But some of the steps that we will be taking over the next few months, Area 15 will be submitting a proposal to us to continue as a grant administrator for this process. They worked with Bloomfield, and then Atomoa has also received one of these grants as well, so they, they're working with Atomoa. They have experience in that area. We have been working with RDG and Associates for these original designs. We will be required to have an RFQ for, from other design firms so that there's a bid process that takes place. So I'm sure RDG will submit again, but there's potentially other architects that will bid on the project as well. It was also mentioned today, this didn't come up in the original application, but there is an opportunity for us to pursue historic preservation designation for the entire downtown square, not necessarily within this grant, but it is something that can be supported by the fact that we have received these federal funds for this. So we're going to be looking into another grant application where we can submit to be approved for this historic preservation designation. So during our grant process, there will be an evaluation by the State Historic Preservation Office. If they determine that there are some properties within the program that would qualify for historic preservation, the property owners can be alerted to that. And if they would choose to pursue historic preservation, then they could be eligible for additional tax credits, depending on what they do. It's a little bit more restrictive in terms of what they can and can't do on their building, but they may be available for some tax credits as well. So that is something that I think we will probably, in addition, pursue. We will need a consultant for the State Historic Preservation Office. There'll be a separate person that will be hired to review that, so we will do an RPO for, for that person. We will need someone to be a point person from within the city to interact with the grant administrator and also the property owners. There's obviously going to be more that the property owners are going to need to, to do. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the meeting, but that, that is something that we have to designate. Part of what we'll be doing at this point, you recall that what we are going to be getting from the property owners is an easement on the facade of their building, so that the investments that are actually made are sort of under our control for about five years. So that if they, if somebody came in, the building sold, and they wanted to redo the facade after there were, there were dollars put into that, that would not be allowed. And so that easement allows us to have that. All the property owners understand that. That was explained to them during the original process. But we do have to sign separate agreements with them and also get these facade easements, so that'll be part of the process going into final design. So a new architect will review what's been suggested thus far, go into a final design process, and we'll be coming up with probably better estimates than we submitted in this first round, because there'll be something more specific. As you recall, this is going to be let to one contractor. That's part of the grant as well. So that one contractor would be doing all 15 properties. Once the design is final, the agreements are all signed, the property owners would put 50% of the estimate upfront as earnest money to be in the program. And then there would be construction estimates. We would have some policies to adopt. And then we would also activate the facade, Downtown Facade Committee. Where as part of the grant, we appointed a committee, oh, quite a while ago, probably a little over a year ago, that would help to, to work on this as well. So that would be activated. So those are some of the steps that are coming up, but I think it's, it's going to be very exciting. Some of the communities that have- Some of the communities that have been through this and have finished their construction, it's very, very vast improvements in the downtown. I think we're going to see that as well. We were talking today about how we thought that the estimates that went in for most of the properties were probably a little high. I think we're going to be able to get more value out of this once we really get down to a lot of the estimates that will be coming for this final design. Let's see. And then also, we've had very productive meetings this week about the development of our skate park, and I wanted to invite Melanie to give us a brief report on what we've gotten accomplished in the last week.
Thank you. And I wanted to come up here today, because it's nice to come talk to you guys when I'm not asking for money and I'm not trying to raise your rates. The skate park has started off very well, and thank the ledger for the good coverage that they've given. Since the last time it was presented to you guys, we have moved the location again. It is still at Obie Nelson Park, but now we, we're a little farther west and a little farther south to the location of the sand volleyball courts. No equipment would have to be moved with that, and only ash trees will have to be taken down for that. So, and then because of all of the, I will say excitement and energy that this group has created, the donor has asked to increase the square feet of the built, of the park. Originally, the thought was to build a shelter along with this. The donor has asked to make the park larger and not build the shelters, so we're looking at more of a 7,000 square foot park rather than a 5,000 square foot park. So lots of good stuff going on there, so, since I'm not asking for money, I wanted to come up and share that.
Great, thanks Melanie. We had, well, we had the representative of the company here from Los Angeles. He's a native of Iowa City, has been skating since he was 10 years old, and quickly got into skateboard design, went, went on scholarship to USC, and was recruited by one of the top skate park developing companies in the country. So he's very excited about this project, and he wants to do a Midwest theme. So we're talking about how to add theme elements to the, to the park. I told him about our history with Loud and Machinery Company, so he's going to start looking at those type elements, but this is going to be a very unique park. They want to make it something of a signature park, and the square footage is somewhat significant. Our donor got a look at some other parks that were 10,000 square feet, 40,000 square feet, and sort of looked and said, I think I'd like to have a little bit more like that. So we're very appreciative of, of the donor for this project, and I know we had a lot of good skateboarders at our meetings too, giving us some design recommendations, so it's a good week.
How many skateboarders were there?
Derek, how many, how many skaters did we have at those, at the meeting? About 15?
I would even say a little more than a dozen.
Yeah.
And we had about seven or eight stay to do some sketching with, with Vince from Spawnt Ranch, and did some layouts right there, so.
The other thing too is you realize that there's, you know, there's a connection, there's a network between, you know, the different parks around the, around the state also, the park in Iowa City and the park in Oskaloosa, big, big park in Davenport. So, you know, there'll, there'll probably be some draw to our new park as well.
I guess the one thing that I will be asking you, the council for, is the, and it was mentioned in the paper, but the skater's brought up about the city regulations regarding skateboarding, where it's legal, where it's not legal. And we found that, your ordinance says it's allowed on sidewalks in residential areas, which means if you're trying to get from campus to Obie Nelson, you would have to go all the way to C Street, and then down to Fillmore, and then over to Obie Nelson. So I did send it on to the Public Safety Committee to review that.
That's to ride their skateboard from A to B?
Yes, yes. Because apparently that's how a lot of them get around.
Yeah, anywhere, yeah, obviously it is, and you know, that, I think.
But they need to stay out of the street, and the right of way is for the cars and the bicycles.
The Public Safety Committee will work on that.
Chief, the chief will have her say, for sure. But we were, chief, we were thinking that maybe if we could do something around our bikeway/walkway routes, so that they were somehow designated.
They stay in one place and go across where they're supposed to go. It's when they're skating where they're not supposed to be, or grinding on the memorial benches down in the park, or hanging off of Derek's light poles.
Well, hopefully that's what, we're going to be taking care of that, with a $150,000 park.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move on then, committee reports, Ways and Means.
Yes, we did meet last Thursday. It was joint meeting with Economic Development. We considered the request to have a letter of intent by the developers of the Pilot Grove project on the south end of town. The TIF project there has some additional, there's, there's a whole additional development that's, that's planned there, but it, nothing is set at this point. What they did request is that we give a letter of intent that if the extra money, the tax increment value is sufficient, that we would extend the street that we're putting in for Pilot Grove, about a block or two, is it?
Something like that.
And this was brought to the council at our last council meeting. It's not new for anyone, but we, after considering and, and really reviewing what are the plans and what are the, you know, possible factors in that development, we felt comfortable to recommend to the council to go ahead and issue that letter, providing, of course, it's non-binding, non-legal contract that we're offering, but just simply if the money is there, that we would use it in that regard. And so as long as our city attorney would approve, I would make the motion that we go ahead and do that.
It's all contingent on the assessment, and you don't control it.
Right. Right.
Thanks, John. So then you would, you would recommend to the council to approve the letter of intent?
Approve that a letter of intent be drafted if it hasn't been already, and, and provide it to the developers there.
Okay. Do you want to see that letter for, for approval beforehand?
I think.
Have it drafted with that sentiment?
I don't have it drafted. I have notes on it from Economic Development's discussion.
Okay.
I think, I think probably, unless there's some severe reason to rush, I'd probably nice to just see it at our next council meeting and approve it then.
As long as you're indicating you're agreeable to issue.
Yeah. Good. So that would be my motion.
John, could we have you come up for a second?
Sure.
Thanks. So, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're talking about the increment from the Pilot Grove Savings Bank and not that entire district.
It's the bank's increment that so far is being spread, and the development coming around the corner of the bank is what we would extend another block or two.
And the, yeah.
We're talking about somewhere between maybe 50 and $130,000 maximum difference in increment. So we don't know for sure, but the most we could pave is a couple blocks, could be half of that.
And is that, is a letter of intent like this within the, within the boundaries of our TIF rules?
Yeah, we can, we can indicate to a developer that our intention is to go as far as development as possible, especially when we need the cooperation of the developer to make, complete our descriptions for the street that's already being built with the original TIF design. I don't know that we've got that deed yet, do we, Mel? Okay, so we, we, we have it as an incentivization for completion of some real estate work that needs to happen as part of the overall TIF.
Okay. Thank you. Then an entertaining motion to approve the, the writing of a letter of intent to be passed on to developer.
That was my motion.
Okay. So motion by Revolinsky, second by Ledger Kalin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, I mean, Jessica, would you like to talk about it? Or I can just say, Adam Plegge from FIDA presented to us a plan to encourage housing development. It's not something that we were going to really present here, but I think.
We just had a big picture discussion about economic development and, and the housing needs assessment, and where we're at, and what's kind of in the works and going on. And so what we've decided is to put the Housing Task Force back together and create some new members and add some, add some new members to that, to that list, and really evaluate policies and things going forward before hopefully we have too much further development go on. So we're going to kind of evaluate that and do some review, I guess. So it was just a general discussion at this point, no action taken by Economic Development at this point.
In addition, we heard from Park and Recs that spent money, unbudgeted money, and requested a allocation from loss to cover it. Derek, what was that about?
We were asking.
Maybe she can come up.
We asked the Ways and Means Committee for about $6,000 to do an upgrade at the Waterworks Park, since we're going to have the Fourth of July out there.
Electric.
So it would be electrical.
Electric service coming in from B Street to Waterworks Park, right?
Yep. Okay, and that.
To expound on that a little bit, there is not adequate service out there right now to power all the activities that go on, not only at Fourth of July, but, but other park activities. And this year, we're going to be trying to put on more during our Fourth of July ceremony because of conjunction with the 175th anniversary of our city. So it's needed from the standpoint that we can no longer draw enough power from the source that we have at the water treatment plant in order to power all the activities out there. And the closest place that we could bring the electricity from is a pole over on B Street, and they'll have to trench it in and go across the roadway, and we'll have a little bit of roadway work, and it'll all be underground, so there won't be any poles or anything like that in the area. But it'll, it'll probably provide, what, another 200 amp service setup out there? Something like that.
So it seemed like a, something that, a worthy cause here, something that we really should, should do, given the fact that this celebration is almost upon us. And then the question was to Ways and Means, well, how are we going to pay for it? And the suggestion was, Joy found some little extra in our, in our lost budget for the current fiscal year. Not a whole lot, but enough to cover this amount. And so what was our projected balance, and then after this, we would be left with, how much?
I didn't look at the balance today, because all I was looking at was the expenditures, and we budgeted $46,000 at loss this current year. We spent $80,000.
Oh my.
So, yeah, it's carryover from last year, but I, it's not very much. It's like between 12 and 15,000, I think.
12 and 15 is what we have left in that count?
Yeah, I didn't look at the exact balance, but.
And so the, the committee did feel comfortable or recommended the council go ahead and improve this expenditure from the balance that we had there.
Okay. Motion by Revolinsky to approve the, the upgrade for the electrical at Waterworks Park.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
There was an additional item of business at our Ways and Means meeting. It was a request from Dick DeAngelo's on behalf of two different organizations. One was from Sophia, which got somehow their application for funds, which they were expecting for their event, the Italian Day Festival, what do we call it?
All Things Italian.
All Things Italian Festival in June was not considered in this year's budget due to fact that the, the timing of the application was, the, the application was not submitted in a timely way. There's also, well, just dealing with that one, the feeling was, even though the request was for a minor amount of money, I think you're looking for 2,000? Yeah. The feeling was not comfortable to going any further down in our, on our, on our lost, on our current years, the lost money. And so we did point out there were all kinds of, all kinds of funding riding on the sale of Logan Apartments, and that, that we could perhaps consider it again if and when Logan Apartment sells, and we have, we have an idea of what our, what our financial situation will be at that time. But there was no action taken, suggested by the committee on that request. The other one was Dick, also represents Fairfield Media Center, and there was a request there for additional funding, but I think, did, did we find it in the budget then, Dick? So we're good. So that request is withdrawn in there, yeah. So that was our, our report.
Okay, thanks, John. I spoke with Dick earlier this week and asked him to attend tonight, because when we spoke about two weeks ago, and we talked about what had happened in January, and it, I think there was kind of a unfortunate miscommunication that Dick knows, knows well enough that applications have to be filled out, but he was assured that it was okay, that that was going to be in the budget. Was not the case, so this is where he finds himself at this point in time. He was going to come directly to the council, went to Ways and Means, so the council, I think your request probably still stands to support, you know, this, this festival. You know, we, obviously, you're not a new event, so if, you know, if, if we had someone that was, you know, looking for funds, and they missed the announcement in the newspaper that they had to have applications in by January 15th, then we would just tell them, look, try again next year. We understand you're a recurring event, you provide a lot of value to the city, so it's, again, it was kind of an unfortunate event. We're not going to, we're not going to know anything before the end of our fiscal year, I don't think, with Logan, so with the, you know, with the council, with, with a recommendation of no from the Ways and Means, still entertain the possibility of, you know, awarding something to this worthy festival. We, you know, we, I know our, our reserve balance is, is small, but it's also six weeks to the end of our fiscal year, so.
Well, let me just say, you know, one of the reasons we said no is kind of based on what Joy had said. I mean, on one hand, we had $12,000 left or something, but on, and then we gave six away. But then you said, well, no, we don't really have after that now six. So what is the story, Joy? Is it, is it different? Or, I mean, I don't remember exactly, but the second thing you said made us feel like, oh, no, no, we can't tap into it any further.
Well, we didn't want to end, you know, we wanted to make sure we ended in the black this year, and so we didn't promise Dick for sure that we'd be able to do it, but we would evaluate here, you know, as time went on, and what our expenditures were, where we were actually at. And then if we felt that we could do that, we would. And Joy was going to go back and, you know, review it again and see, make sure that we had everything.
So.
It was so important.
Yeah, and as I said, I didn't look at the balance. I just looked at the expenditures, and we've spent 40,000 more than in this current year than we said we would.
Does that mean we had 40,000 more income than we thought we would?
We had leftover. No, we had, we're not getting.
We had leftover from last year. Yeah. Well.
So the, I know you, we've only got our March report, Joy, but what, you know what our balance is?
I did, yeah.
What is it? Because in March, we had $166,000 balance in loss. So, but that's, that's diminished now to?
Yeah, and I know we have, we have a debt, debt payment coming up for the Sondheim too.
Oh, that's.
That was what kind of made us feel iffy about it.
I'd be all right to bring this up at our next council meeting if, Joy, you want to research it a little more, and then, then we had a little more current knowledge.
Okay.
Right, because I believe we all.
We're getting so close to the end at that point.
We'll be a little closer to the.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
We were all in support of the event. It wasn't bad at all. It was just making sure that we were responsible and that.
And Dick has personally guaranteed the weather this year, so I'm feeling very relieved.
And he's rented the Sondheim Center, so.
Yes.
Just in case, three strikes. So, all right. Well, thanks, Dick. Come back and see us on the 27th, and we'll, we'll put it on the.
Street closings.
Right. Okay, sounds good. Anything else, John?
No, that was it on our committee.
Jessica, okay, thank you. Next Personnel Committee report.
Yes, Personnel Committee met tonight at 6 o'clock to review a services agreement offered by French Renecor Associates to the city.
offered by French Rentier Associates to the city, and the purpose of this would be to provide general consulting services in lieu of a city administrator to take over part of those responsibilities. So to provide, for instance, steady-day advice, separate from specific project assignments, to assist the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, city department heads, and other city employees in planning, engineering, or other assigned duties in connection with the city operations. So we had a fairly vigorous, the engineer assigned to that role would be Melanie Carlson. It'd be about 80 hours a month, we estimate. And after a vigorous discussion, the Personnel Committee referred this to the Ways and Means Committee with approval.
Nice pass in the buck.
No, 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 no. No, they were also making a recommendation that an interim solution--
This is an interim solution to--
I'm kidding.
Going into another search for a city administrator in the short term. And we felt good about making that recommendation to Ways and Means. So John's going to take it over now.
He loves meetings, so--
He's delighted. But we think it's a good plan, so we're feel comfortable with this.
Thanks, Doug. The idea of coming up with an interim solution, I think, serves us in a couple of ways. One is, from a continuity standpoint, there's always a big challenge when you're bringing in somebody new, and there's such a big learning curve, and there's a new administrative culture that's going to be established. And we have, you know, so many important projects that are going on right now. Our budget is behind us, but we find that, you know, very specifically, Melanie Carlson is involved with many of them, and has made a, you know, a real substantial contribution, not just in the services that she provides directly, but in a lot of the other projects that were assigned to her by Kevin Flanagan, and will be assigned by me also when we get to CDBG territory. But there are a lot of, I think there's a lot of value in this interim opportunity. Council can evaluate this as it goes along at any point in time and say, "You know what? I think it's time we have a full-time administrator that's going to provide a little bit more direction, vision, those sorts of things." That's completely fine. The services agreement would have a two-week notice within it, so that it could be terminated at any time. But it does make some sense to follow this path for our transition, so we'll leave it to Ways and Means to evaluate the contract itself and make a recommendation to the council at the next meeting. Any other, is everything done?
That's it.
Okay, any other business before the council? Not entertaining motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Any adjourn?